There it is. I'm going to ask if anybody has any motions and you say what you'd like to propose consideration this and take that as a motion or asset, so that would be discussed.
That's fine. Next Kayla may have some preliminary work, but she's had a chance to do that thing.
Yeah, that's all right. Hey Liz, after we talked yesterday about events going away, we didn't have the new proposal coming.
Happy Valentine's Day, Mr. Witten.
Good morning, Mr. Deedmer.
I still didn't get up there to look at the site. I still didn't ride up there to look at the site.
Yeah, dude, you can't see anything at all. You can see the trees.
See, it's pretty much rocky. I think that they had some other problems. So I guess they could have added into the long section. And that's where the well, isn't that the well side probably?
Yeah, there's, that's where you start that height.
Yep, that's where I was over to, oh, where did we go over to?
Goes over to where Daniel lives.
Yeah, his name, that's right.
Swiney.
Swiney, that's right.
Yeah, I've got that. I sort of copied it all screwy, but we've got it.
This was, this is, this is just for people. I mean, it's just, it's a very big noise.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, real trade. Yes, I think if we're doing a lot of people. Paul, I guess we could come up with one. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think we could like talk about, yeah. What to do there, but then he's going to scout. He's going to call them across the fire.
Yes.
And everything's going to be around the suffers the most if we do delays. But I don't know. I guess we could make them come up with something and send it back to council. And Mason seems to think that's against them. They can tweak it further than we advertised.
Oh, okay.
So they wouldn't delay it. They could still adopt something if they're next leading, even if they make further changes against them.
And that's all we do is we adopt it.
We just make a recommendation ready.
That's fine.
Whatever it is.
We've got about a minute.
Whatever it is. But that would be a good question to ask. Maybe Kayla or somebody clarify.
Let's come to order. This is a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Montreat. I'd like to welcome everyone here. It's always great to have the public and we're grateful for all the members except John is here. So Daniel will be able to participate today. Let's have a moment of silence. Amen. We're here with a very limited agenda, which you have before, and that is to, to consider, well, I guess we have to adopt the agenda first, which has been circulated. So is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
It's your second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. Thank you. And we have a limited purpose here today, and that is to consider a proposed amendment to the Town of Montreat General Ordinance. I'm going to ask Kayla if she will give us the preliminaries to that, and then we can, I know there's some other proposals to be introduced also, but if you sort of lead us in this, that'd be great.
I just want to talk briefly about, is this on? Yeah. The text amendment process. So what the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to do is make a recommendation on proposed language. That's part of this revision, part of the application. You will make that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, and the Board of Commissioners will consider that, make any revisions they find necessary, and then either, you know, approve or deny it. Now, there's kind of multiple different options in front of you. You have the applicant's option, you have the town attorney's option, and then you have a third option from Dan Dean and Commissioner Mason Blake that was sent out last night. So what you recommend can be identical to one of those, it can be a combination of those. But we want to look at what the applicant's request was, the section that they're proposing to amend, and that's where we limit our amendment. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it seems to me that what we ought to do is introduce
Mm-hmm.
the proposal from the applicant, Mr. Higgins.
Yep.
And then Dan could move to amend or substitute, and we could consider that.
Yep.
So would someone like to move to?
Well, wait one second. Yes, Angie? Planning, drive, presentation. So go under PZC. Yes.
You okay, Angie?
Yep, she got it.
Okay, great. Would someone like to move the consideration of the Gary Higgins proposal?
Yep.
Would someone like to move that to get it before us?
Well, do you want me to do the presentation before you guys make any motions?
Well, I think we just need to get it before us in order to have the presentation. Anybody? Okay, Ellen. Okay, so let's move to second. All in favor, not of the motion, but of putting it on the agenda. Not of the text itself, but of putting it on the agenda. Say aye. All opposed. Thank you. Okay, Kayla?
Surface water that it has to, that that buffer is applied to are perennial or intermittent surface waters only. So Little Piney Branch is subject to that restriction. And the applicant and property owner tried to apply for permits to cross this, cross the stream, to build a driveway to access their lot. Section 305-1 does not allow any impervious surface, so they were not able to do, to do so. So now they have legal access to their lot, but cannot actually build a driveway to access it. The stormwater ordinance does not allow variances. So there's no variance process that the applicant could have used to have an exception granted. So in lieu of that, they submitted a text amendment. This text amendment asks to allow exceptions to built-upon area restrictions to be granted by the stormwater administrator for, and I think this is really important here, impervious driveway or walkway access to residential development, not structures, only access. So I would just want to make that crystal clear. And ask for that exception when there is a lack of practical alternatives. So they have to demonstrate that, that there are no other alternatives. Again, applicants proposed text amendment would not permit structures, only access. And non-residential development would not be permitted to utilize this exception. So it would only be for single-family homes, a two-family home, I don't know if any of those actually exist, but residential development only. Many other jurisdictions in the region who operate local stormwater management programs permit exceptions to buffers for residential development. Montreat is one of the only ones that does not. So in my staff report, I collected all of the exceptions for everybody in our region who operates under an MS4 permit and has a local stormwater management program. And Montreat is one of the only ones that does not allow an exception. And again, an exception for access for residential development, not structures, and not non-residential development. Yes.
Access means this is really the most simple driveway feasible to provide access without enhancements like light posts, recognized gates, and just trying to define exactly what areas are.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I, I think that the specifics of the design would be determined by some of the language. We're talking generally about access. We're talking, I need a driveway to get to my house. I need a walkway to get to my house that crosses a stream, and I need to put impervious surface down. Yeah, there's not a, you know, the, the language would, is going to define the parameters that that approval is granted within. Okay, so in the, in the staff, can't get it up. Okay, that's fine. So in the staff report, I have the general, the current language. And again, that just speaks to all built-upon area shall be a minimum of 30 feet landward from perennial or intermittent streams. That's what's there today. What the applicant is asking for is a new subsection put under the existing 305-1 that discusses this exception. And you all should have that language in front of you. The town's legal counsel, Susan Taylor Rash, proposed alternative language, again, still under a subsection 305-1A. And you should have that as well. And, okay, so Planning and Zoning Commission action. I know I explained this at the top of what is expected of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I just want to reiterate this. This ordinance is housed under the Montreat General Ordinance. It's not housed under the zoning ordinance. So section 160D 601 of the North Carolina General Statute states that before adopting, amending, or appealing any ordinance or development regulation, the governing body, so Board of Commissioners, shall hold a properly noticed legislative hearing. Section 160D 604 states that the governing body can refer the text amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and comment before making their decision. So at the February 8th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting, the Commissioners referred this text amendment to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and comment. They do, they did request that the Planning and Zoning Commission's comments be returned in time for the March 14th, 2024, for the March Board of Commissioners meeting. So Planning and Zoning Commission must make a recommendation to approve, approve with revisions or deny the text amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission must clearly state in their recommendation what the proposed language is.
Kayla, you said that the council approved this in February, I think you said February.
They gave granted an access easement in February.
Okay, of last year.
Of last year.
So does he have a time limit within which?
No, that, that easement runs with the land.
State permits, so he has the one year on.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
He did indicate that he has gotten DEQ approval as well as the Army Corps, and they have given him a time limit, which to do, they have to also put in the process.
I'm gonna, he has, he is covered under a general, it's a GC permit and a nationwide permit for DEQ and Army Corps of Engineers. I don't believe there's a time limit on that, but he would have to return if he altered his plans. The, those permits do have construction time restrictions based on, you know, impacts to endangered species and things like that. But as far as the access easement goes, that's a legally granted access easement recorded with the Register of Deeds, runs with the land.
But as far as you're concerned, the timeframe is sufficient for the way we're acting?
Yes.
Going back to the council. Okay, I just wanted to make clear that. Good, thank you.
So that's, that's all I have. Does the board have any questions for me?
Any discussion about anyone?
I wanted to see, so section 602 requires that the easement must be at least 12 feet wide. Does that mean any bridge access would also, okay, so that's not applied to, it's the easement only. Thank you.
Can I have a question also?
Yeah.
I don't know, you set out some information to add.
My phone, please.
You set out something? You set out something?
Turn it on.
There we go. That might help. That basically had plots of all the area in Montreat. This area in question, and I think you'd come over to show us where it was, it looks like there are other potential lots all along there. So that anything we decide here should probably apply to those as well. Is that not correct?
So a text amendment is going to apply to the entire planning and zoning jurisdiction of the town. That area in question, I believe those pieces of property are owned by the MRA, and they are aware that they do not have access as well. So, you know, how that is resolved in, in the future is up to, you know, how the MRA wants to approach it, what the Board of Commissioners at the time is willing to grant. So, yeah.
Well, my, my reason for raising this is I assumed it was probably MRA property, but are they just now starting to release this?
No, this is a private property owner that is, that submitted the application.
That had, had held that property before, for some time. So it's not something that the MRA is starting to release those lots for sale?
No, I believe that lot was already plotted, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? I've got one suggestion, and we may be considering other proposals, but on this particular proposal, which is the last page of, this is Susan Taylor Rash. This is 305.1A. So I want to look and see if there were any Vs, Cs, and Bs, and they're not. So we don't need to have an A standing by itself. That doesn't make sense. I mean, that's just the lawyer in me. So what I wanted to propose, if we do adopt this, that we put a B and put a subparagraph before the last sentence that says the stormwater administrator may require the applicant, blah, blah, blah. So there'd be, we would have an A and B. That may just be me as a grammarian, but it seems to me that that'd be appropriate.
Do you have a page number that you wish to mark?
I'm just looking at the last page of what Kayla said.
The last page of the staff report.
It's just the town attorney's version, Liz.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's, that doesn't change any substance. That just separates it out. So an A and a B.
I think, just as I studied this...
Yeah, by the end of last night, three different options. And I just really want to thank, first, Kayla, thank you for all this work that you've done, and just also for the other committee members, you know, as we're all working together on this. When I look at the applicant's version, my first thought was, it's so vague, you know? I totally understand, you know, totally empathize with the situation, but it just seemed vague, especially as we are considering the comprehensive plan and, you know, just different things in Montreat. And then the town attorneys, much more detailed, but I still had a few questions. And then last night, Dan and Mason graciously had worked on a third option. And when I read through that and studied through that, I thought, very specific language, and I really, really appreciated that. So as we come together with this recommendation, how, how do we bring about which version or...
By you, by you moving to, to introduce
Okay.
the amendment that's proposed by Mr. Williams.
Well, does anybody, I'll ask my fellow committee members here, does anybody, has everyone had time to study and read through the option that we were sent last night? Are there any questions about it?
Well, why don't you move to put it before?
Okay. I would like to move that we put before the committee right now, the version, the third version of the text amendment that was put together by Dan Dean and Mason Blake.
Is there a second?
I second.
I should not even go get Mr. Dean.
Did you want, did you...
I'm teasing. Okay, so that's, so let's, we're not voting to approve it, we're not voting to put it on the agenda. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. And with that, I think I'll call on Mr. Dean to, to explain what this proposes.
I may want to refer to Mr. Blake, but I'll start.
And that would be welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think Liz actually summed up it pretty well. I'm, I'm number one sympathetic to Mr. Higgins and predicament he finds himself in, and I think we're all trying to see if we can help him if possible, while at the same time, the overriding concern needs to be protection of Montreat and its stormwater system, of course, but also its streams and green spaces. So, you know, there's a balancing act trying to accomplish all of that. I, I agree with Liz that the original version, while accomplishing what he was seeking, Mr. Higgins, that is, I think that it left too many unopened areas or undecided areas that need to be addressed. And I think the town's attorney addressed many of those, tightened it up, put some parameters and some objective standards for approving these in the future. But, but this has been stated early, anything we do is going to apply to the whole town of Montreat. Now, I don't know how many other possibilities are such situations to arise, but just looking at that one area, as I think Bill Tucker just pointed out, there looks like there are lots on both sides. They could, the conference center could lay it out into eight or 10 more lots just right there. Now, the rest of the town, there may be 500 other options, or maybe only two. I mean, I, I don't think we know that, but we just have to be cognizant at all times that whatever we do is going to impact those areas as well. So given Mason the, the main credit for this draft, I think he has tried to tighten it up even further, focusing primarily on that second part of the equation, and that is the protection of the town and its waterways and stormwater. So, and I think we need to be, that's where we need to be, in my opinion. So that's why I support it. I've worked with him on finalizing the version that you have before you. We're not saying it's perfect. There's some options that were left in there for who approves some things, as y'all read. But I think it's a good, tight ordinance that would protect the town, protect the waterways, prevent problems in the future, while at the same time, providing an option for people who find themselves in this situation in the future, to at least have an option to get to their property. You know, some could say, well, we should just deny it, but I, I think we need to at least try to come up with a system that would allow people to build on their lots while, again, emphasizing and focusing on the protection of the, of the town and its property. So I support that version. We're not saying it's perfect, couldn't be tweaked and improved even further, but I think it's a good, good option that would allow Mr. Higgins to build his property. As has been pointed out, the future, even if these other lots were to be opened up, Alan, I don't know what the conference center's plans are. I mean, it may be once they see this and, you know, they may decide that's a good option, sell those lots and divide them up. But they would still have to get legal access first. So they're now, we've now kind of put two hurdles in front of them, protect the town first. They'd have to get the, the legal access from someone, and right now, unless they come in from the other side of the mountain or somewhere else, they'd have to go to the port of town. So they'd have to get the legal access from the town first, and then they'd have to meet these requirements that we're going to adopt here. So I support the third option, if that's what we're calling it. I apologize that you did not get it before last night, but I think we're all recognizing there's some urgency to help Mr. Higgins, if at all possible, while at the same time, options to go take this down.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. The chair's going to recognize Mr. Blake if he would like to comment, explain, or what have you. We're glad you're here, Mason.
Thank you. I appreciate your opinion this. I, I, we were, had a capstone last week. Kayla had done a great job of getting this material out. Actually, a week earlier than tomorrow, I had been involved in a lot of different things, including one of Al's policies, the family, it's been a gory and odd. It just sucked up all my time. I had to just newsletter...
Excuses, excuses.
I didn't get to this. But I got to it over the weekend before the, the town council meeting. I met Kayla the very next day, Monday other day. I said, Kayla, I just, I, I looked at what Susan Taylor Rash had done, and I said, Kayla, I can't believe this. It is two-point, I haven't had a chance to think about it. It may be fine, but I, and so the council, it needs more of all. And Kayla, it always takes on this meeting with you folks, which I thought was a brilliant idea, she's ahead of me by a step or two, as usual. And so we're here. And I read, I didn't have a chance to think about Susan Taylor Rash's revision, but rather than make it memorable, she actually broadened the exception the applicant had proposed. She, she didn't have it specified for residential. She didn't have it specified only where you couldn't get access. In fact, now, for what it, for a language, and I'm not sure it's intentional, but if you can just prove you've got one down, one less round, based on your alternative, you get to cross the creek. Or you get cut down one less tree, you get to cross the creek. It's or, or, or. It's not an, an, an. So it sounds better, but it works. It's a broader basis on which to seek this exception to build a crossing over where it could be any water body in this town. And so I said, well, I got to do something about it. I got to start, and I thought about it. The other things that bothered me is that there really wasn't assurance to the town of what it was voting on. You know, you talked about, what are the details? Is there, is there, is there a street line? Where, all they had was a site plan, a site plan. You don't see anything from a site plan other than where it is. It said the site plan was somehow going to prepare, provide assurance that, that it would be designed and constructed to minimize impervious surface, protect against erosion and sedimentation, and the least effects on aquatic play and use being used. You think you can see that on a site plan? I built a lot of stuff, and I, I'm just a lawyer, but part of my lawyerry was building a new town in Florida called here. And I dealt with engineers in construction for 20 years. A site plan will provide the town absolutely no assurance that this, that the waterway would be protected the way I think our common man requires, certainly which, which Mr. Higgins is willing to do. And so I, I felt like there weren't enough things in place just to make sure the town knew exactly what it was approving, and we weren't approving an exception in a vote. And I think that's what we were initially asked to do. And then finally, I thought we needed more than just summary, like summary language requiring that this be maintained and repaid. And we already have language in our stormwater management section that requires operation and maintenance agreement. The agreement I'm proposing is no different than any agreement we require for any, any, any major stormwater management project. This is not perfect. It was done very quickly. I think Bill and I and Dan have all had conversations over this morning, you know, there's a tension between leaving too much destruction in the food body and requiring a lot of front. And the more you require somebody to give you a front and money to spend, then there should be less destruction. I can tell you this needs a lot of improvement, and I'm dedicated to getting it done between now and the time, the time they through by the commissioners, working with Kayla and the other commissioners, to make sure we do something that's fair for our citizens and fair for the town. But I don't, I don't think what we have, Susan Taylor, Susan Taylor Rash, is anywhere here anymore. And I'll just say it, and that's not being critical, it's just what I believe, and I could be dead wrong, and I'm prepared to remind you of that.
Mason, could I ask a question? You and I and Dan talked, and I just wanted to suggest, and I think you agreed, but working it out, and I've got a suggestion for that. To require a complete set of construction plans before they even know if they've got a permit is awful expensive, and I felt the same about, so the engineer could do a preliminary plan, y'all could work that all out. So things like that, I'm wondering if we could smooth it out a little bit.
We could, we could look at, and I would like to think about it, but yes, we could have preliminary site plan, preliminary plans at some level of the type that we're comfortable with, so we know what we're getting. We know that we're getting the street lights, we know what it's going to look like, but preliminary plans at a sufficient level of the type, with the requirement that the final plans have to be constructed, substantial walls would be included in the plan.
Sure.
I don't think, no, you know, I talked to Dan about that, but I, I think that works. I mean, we, the permits are general permits, and so y'all that don't know what a general permit is, is it's, it's, it's in the statute book. It says if you do, the permit has the permit requirements, and you need the permit requirements. You fill it in, you send it in. They don't even issue you a permit. It's on a map, at least, at least core. But you don't even go, permit back, or maybe they send you a letter, they got your stuff. But it's, it's sort of on a map. So we're not requiring them to go under do extensive permit negotiations with the corps or with the state, okay? That's dumb. There's no expense. It's not like, I'm sure, Bill, you and I have been in projects where you, you'd spend a year getting your core permit at hundreds of thousands of dollars. This ain't that situation. It's just general permits. So if you've got the permits, it's not, it's not a stretch to ask them for those. And certainly a site plan at a given level, and again, if there's an operation and maintenance agreement that's consistent with what we get, you've got to already do that anyway.
Sure.
And it's, it's a form we can, we've got a form right now that we might apply to do that. So I, I, again, the language is perfect. I'm more than willing to work with it, go years to help Mr. Higgins. I was out on the side, I walked this, it's a major project, guys. I mean, you're, you're walking down 30 or 40 yards skeetly down to that stream, another 20, 30 yards back up to the top of the other side's lots, where he's going to be able to be painting walls, horses, plus, plus a culvert this long, going crossing that stream, which is a significant stream there. He's going to spend a lot of money, and it's not unfair for us to ask him to come up with exactly what he's asking for, they should be giving him to stay over that part. And remember, this could be over any other creek in town, at any other location. And I don't, again, I don't know where it's possible, but theoretically it's possible through our orders as a fundamental decision.
Kayla, do we have a meeting the first week in March?
This, this is the only meeting that we can have and still be able to advertise for March. To get this, to get this on the Commissioners' agenda.
On the councils.
Yes, and you guys have to make your decision. Can I speak really, Mason and I talked about this this morning, and I'm the one who administers the ordinance, so I just want to make it clear, you know, they have, they would have to get a stormwater control permit for this action. I need to have in the plans a level of detail that will allow me to verify that they are complying with, you know, the ordinance. At the end of the project, they also have to submit a survey to me, some set of plans, something that shows that they built what they were supposed to build. You know, and there's a, I think, a degree of flexibility in there, depending on what it is. And oftentimes, depending on the size of the development, a site inspection. They also have to have an operation and maintenance agreement. That's written into the ordinance. If you get a stormwater control permit, you have to have an operation and maintenance agreement recorded with the Register of Deeds, and you have to give me a copy of it.
Is that, is that the structure? Is even off-site?
Uh, yeah, I would, I would subject this to that because it's...
We can alter this language to say if you're going to have that same agreement, new agreement, just to make sure that...
And that's, and that's, you and I had talked about that this morning, putting the O and M agreement, the O and M language that's in there.
In there.
Yes, and I, and I will say, you know, the, the going through the core and DEQ, you know, I asked for copies and evidence that he had, that he was falling under, you know, those general permits. I called DEQ, I called Army Corps of Engineers, you know, to verify, and when I get his plans, you know, we'll double check. And if there's any issues, if he's straying outside of those, then the Army Corps of Engineers and DEQ will enforce the, the permit. You know, at the, at the town level, like I said, you know, the level of detail in the plans needs to be sufficient so I can verify... plans needs to be sufficient so I can verify that, that what he's proposing is, is going to work and be sufficient. You know, and that he's within the limits that he's allowed to be within, you know? He can't go outside the easement area, things like that. So I just wanted to speak to that as far as the administration standpoint goes.
Well, the chair's a little confused because we don't have time this morning with us to go through this and fly speck it and make the corrections to the language. So what I, what I wanna suggest is that we, if we agree to this, that we generally are in agreement with this, but we ask that it be referred back to the council to consult with the zoning administrator to, to rewrite it.
I, I have already done a review on this, and I can speak to that now, to the changes from an administrative standpoint that I would recommend. Mason and I had talked about them this morning. So I don't, from the...
Are y'all ready to do that? Y'all wanna do that? Okay. Ready? Okay.
Sure. So I think the, the first question that the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to answer is, what level do you want this approval to be granted at? Do you want it to be granted at the administrative level through me with signature from the town manager? Or do you want it to have to go through Planning and Zoning Commission or Board of Adjustment?
What do y'all feel?
And I think, and before you get into that, I think Mason, what you said about that balance between the, what we get on the front end versus what we get on the back end. So I don't know if maybe you wanna reiterate that.
And that was a tension here. I mean, I think you guys need to know, the more you ask for a front, and Bill put the final plan discussion, the big bill, you know, the less discretion you can, you can reserve there. I mean, just to be fair to the applicant on the back end. If you're gonna, if you're gonna, and I'd sort of put it all in here, not knowing where you're wanting to go, and, and, and remember in brackets, it was always town administrator versus, you know, you guys. If you, if you wanna, you guys are the discretion, you know, you, you, you're the most discretion. You gotta prove it. He doesn't, he doesn't have anything for certain if you guys approve it. If, if, if Kayla and the town manager approve it, they're, they're limited strictly by what the statute says. So if you leave it with, and I'm not saying you don't, just, just put it all on paper so everybody can sort of think it through, how you wanna approach it. But if, if you leave it as an administrative approval, then you've gotta require less, less control and discretion on the back end. For example, and Kayla was talking about this, if, if she's gonna approve it, all the language I've got about imposing conditions would need to be watered down substantially or eliminated. Because that's basically, they gotta do whatever she says, not in a public hearing, not in a law...
They have to do whatever is written in the ordinance to a T.
Everything written in the ordinance, she's got her in. So there is no discretion. So you need to know that too. So if you leave it there, they do everything to a T. It's, it's, it's in an absence of them not, you know, doing something really wrong, but she's, she's, she's gonna, she's got her in. And so there's that tension. So if you, if you, and that's why she answered a fundamental question, if you want her or her and the town manager to approve it. And I included the town manager candid, not as a reflection on her, but as a reflection on the fact that sometimes that town, zoning administrators have short studies and aren't real familiar with us and have in the past, you know, not showed all the judgment I would prefer. And a safeguard against that for a decision of this significance on the significant natural resources involved, I think if we do it administratively, could include the agreement with the town manager. That's just me, it's in brackets. So, so, so in any event, that's, that's, that's the tension. If you leave it administrative, then you can't fairly require a lot of expensive work upfront. I mean, you, you can more clearly because they can, they can always meet the requirements. They know the requirements going in. If you leave it where you can, you know, it's a legislative position and you've got a lot of discretion, you can't fairly ask them to spend enormous amounts of money with them on the way.
And I, and I think, you know, I just wanna highlight one thing that Mason said is that the burden on the applicant, you know, they are, the, the burden on the applicant, you know, they are asking for an exception, you know? So certainly they bear more burden than your, your typical, you know, home builder. However, you know, like Mason said, there's that tension between how much can you ask for upfront versus on the back end? At what point has the legislation gone beyond, gone to a point where it's? When, when has the legislation gone too far to, to ask for this? And I think that, you know, in, in planning, just as a general, from an administrative standpoint, I look at what other communities do. I look at how they ask for their approvals. And, you know, seeing, you know, how, how that works, what other communities are doing, is it something that can work here? Is a tool that I use to decide, to, to help inform me, when does this need to go to a higher level of approval? Does this need discretionary decision? Or is it something that we can put in a narrow box and say, these are the things you have to do, and if you do these things, you can go. You're good to go.
Do you have a recommendation as to whether we should put it with the zoning administrator and/or the town manager and/or the planning commission?
I mean, I, I can make a recommendation, but I don't, I mean...
All right, let's see if anybody...
Yeah.
I think it's a good question. I like both of them.
Yep.
I'd like to ask that same question to Mason, is he has a preference or a recommendation? Of which of those to choose? I'd like to put both of you on spot now, is what your preference is.
How many of these come up in, in real life? This is the first one.
So I, I can, I can speak to that. I've been approached by several property owners, and it's not for driveways only, it's for walkways. Things like a path to get to a parking area that may be on the other side of, of a, of a regulated water body. So yeah, this is not something that comes up infrequently. However, you know, I always encourage the applicants to try to make it work, you know, without, I mean, obviously, if, if they, if they have to cross the stream to get where they're gonna go, they, they literally can't do it right now. They, they're, they have no option for relief in here, none at all. Even if the state and the Army Corps with their highly certified engineers, which I am not, even if they say it's okay, the local legislation is what is stopping it. And I think one of the points that I made in the board of commissioners meeting is that the regulation of that stream and the protection of that stream is under the authority of the Department of Environmental Quality and the Army Corps of Engineers, not the town. So yes, the town's development is influencing the stream, but the, the, I just wanna make the point that Army Corps and, and DEQ are heavily involved in this.
Let's go back to the question you mentioned. Do you have any preference?
I, I, I think it could be handled either way. There's gonna be pluses and minuses for the applicant. If I'm sort of looking at it from the applicant's perspective, then I'm, I'm looking to make it an administrative decision. Because then I got sort of, if, if I'm looking at it from the town's perspective, I know that, since she's correctly said the state and, state and federal government are looking after these streams, but I also know that every one of these streams goes in that stream. It's very important, it's really everybody in that. And so that if I'm looking at it from the town's perspective, I'm a little more on the discretion period. And you know, you like that in both ways, but you can't. So you've, you've gotta decide who makes the decision. You know, I think, I think I would rather, I, I think it's probably best in the long run to leave it. There's just two, there's two sides to it. But I think you're gonna be, it's gonna be adequate if it's properly drafted. To leave it with, with a lot of this language still in here, it's handled, to go ahead and leave it as an administrative decision. And that's one of the reasons we added all this stuff, to put all these requirements. And if you don't, then you're not gonna know whether, she can't approve, she can't, she can't ever decide whether our streetlights and the plans are on. And, you know, it'll probably still take a little bit more work, but...
May I, um, Chairman, I was just wondering if we could just speak through a couple of hypotheticals and, and hear from Mason and Dan and Kayla as to how the third text amendment would treat it? Because I think part of what we're struggling with is trying to consider all the implications in a short period of time, where I feel like I need to really just drive around the town. So I think a simple one is if somebody wants to build a walkway when they already have access. Like imagine a home that is next to the stream and they have access to a street. Do they now have the ability to seek to build a walkway over the stream even though they already have access? Is that allowed under this change?
Impervent. I was gonna say, I would, a quick answer after the sitter and study would be no, they would not be able to, because we're tying it all down to necessity, and they would not need to have that second access point.
Right. And, and I think that's an important point because the intent is to provide relief, and if they already have access, so, so I'm imagining that we're not gonna end up with all kinds of walkways built over streams when somebody already has access. Another example that occurred to me is if somebody needs this access, so the, the home or the lot that, where the homeowners, the lot owners brought this forward. I understand that the, this particular lot is fairly extraordinary. It sounds like the amount of construction that would be necessary to create this access. But if you have a lot where the stream is only on part of the, the area for access, would, would this text amendment say you don't need to cross the stream, just build your access on the part that doesn't require a stream crossing?
So I, I wanna point out the last part of the third amendment that says the applicant's encouraged to meet with the stormwater administrator before applying. I'm always gonna encourage the least amount of impact. And if they truly cannot do without that impact, I mean, they're, they're going to have to justify that, you know? Minimize impervious surface, protect against erosion and sediment control, have the least adverse effect to the maximum extent quality or a maximum extent practicable. You know, I mean, I think if, if the argument is there, I mean, I think they're welcome to make it, but at the end of the day, you know, this is not just a free for all.
Right. Because if there's an option to go on one side of the lot versus the other to have the least amount or no impact...
Or even a reduction.
Right.
To.
A reduction in size.
A reduction, and they could get a little closer instead of crossing it.
Right.
I guess one situation for the proprietors of the towns in this middle of life, if there are no other situations where this really exists, but there is a, a, access to a lot that, that needs some access, it's kind of we think about, you know, fire emergency situation where emergency crews need the best possible access to that property.
So in Gary Higgins' situation, this is not a public road. This is not a, this is not a street, this is a driveway. So it's the same as any other driveway. Now certainly in my review, I will encourage Mr. Higgins to talk to Black Mountain Fire and Emergency Services and make sure that what he's proposing is sufficient. But there is, there is no regulatory power to regulate a driveway. A public street certainly, but not a driveway. And that's, that's just across the board.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that helps me get comfortable with it when I, when I think just a general principle about implementing change is if, if we don't believe that we can consider all the variables, then we proceed cautiously. I mean, nobody wants to, to do this twice. But I, I would consider moving forward with the amendment as proposed with the P and Z option for oversight, and then we live with it for a year, and then consider any updates that could be necessary. I mean, at the, assuming the Board of Commissioners agrees, because I understand the stormwater ordinance is not necessarily overseen by the P and Z. But there could be a future amendment to the amendment to shift responsibility to the stormwater administrator. So I, I recognize the desire to be efficient, but I think there is a two-step possibility here.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion so we can? You want it to be submitted to the P and Z through the zoning administration?
I can do that. Was there another question?
Can I just ask a question real quick? Because Kayla, you sent us the list of general areas potentially affected by the text amendment, and it's quite a few, which surprised me.
There's were just streams I saw on a map that intersected vacant lots. The, I don't know if those streams are actually perennial or intermittent, and I don't know if those lots are even, have enough space to develop.
It was good to get that information. Mason, have you, have you and Dean had access to see that list? Or it was just surprising to me how many there were. And also my other question is, help me understand this. If you talk administrative versus coming more to planning and zoning and looking at each case individually, is that the tension? Am I understanding that correctly? Okay? And in this third option that you all worked so hard on, and thank you again, does it mean if we went to a more administrative bent, that you would take out the planning and zoning part in the wording of this? Or help me understand that?
Yeah, it would be approved by me under, and signed off by the town manager in a very, very narrow box. Saying if you cannot meet these requirements, you do not get the exception.
Would there ever be a time when it would come to planning and zoning? It would always be administrative?
No, it's at an administrative level approval.
Totally checking off the boxes, yea or nay? Is that correct? Okay.
And let me just follow on that. Is there an appeal from a decision to you, to the council?
No, to Board of Adjustment.
So there would be a...
Yeah.
Right, so there would be a...
Yep. Yeah, there is an appeal process. Yeah, I mean, if, if I could just speak on this for a moment, so just jumping back into the other jurisdictions that allow this exception. They either do it through the stormwater administrator or planning director, or they have a process for variances written into the stormwater ordinance. So we would definitely be doing things a little bit different if, if it did go to Planning and Zoning Commission. I mean, certainly we can look at the language that's in here. But, you know, I do see this particular exception being granted by the stormwater administrator, planning director versus a variance, which would cover the entire ordinance going to a board for approval. So...
I'm not sure I understand. So are you saying that you would prefer the, whereas Mason that question, and he said...
I think that she doesn't want to provide a variance of anything in stormwater, which is what would be the alternative. If you're gonna leave it an exception as opposed to a variance, I mean, who?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It will automatically be done by BLO.
Yeah.
It's an exception that can be handled, it's in the book of the ordinance.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, it's, it's just a higher level of, of burden on the applicant. And, you know, again, if you're writing this as narrowly as it's written, I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, like at, at what point is additional review warranted if it's going to be written this narrowly? That, that's the only thing that I would, I would say.
So if we went with Julie's suggestion to provide the planning and zoning, we would have to revise the detail of the second part, correct? You wouldn't have as much detail if we're gonna, it's gonna be a P and Z review. Whereas if it's a zoning administrator review, we, it would, what you've proposed or what we've proposed here, Mason and I have proposed, doesn't need much changing.
I would, I would say that none of this language needs to come out of it.
Even if it goes to P and Z review?
You certainly, you may wanna do what Bill's talking about, I think definitely though, or a preliminary plan for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
You would not, you would not want them to be on the hook for a full set of plans. I'd work with, there may be a couple of other things, but you have to be fair to the applicant, P and Z. And just where Bill is going, making sure that the burden is reasonable.
The other, the other piece of this that I wanna bring up is that this is for a stormwater control permit. stormwater control permit. Stormwater control permits are issued at the administrative level. The Planning and Zoning Commission is not the stormwater administrator. So I'm not sure if it would be... I guess what I'm trying to say is I want to make sure that the Planning and Zoning Commission has the authority to grant this exception, because if we're talking about granting a stormwater control permit, stormwater control permits are issued by the stormwater administrator. It's not the stormwater administrator and another body, it is the stormwater administrator. And so I, I guess I just, again, I got this text this morning. So I guess my, my concern is that, you know...
Then we should add the sentence, we should spend five minutes and add the sentence about the preliminary plans with sufficient detail and eliminate the PCC oversight.
Sure. You want to propose, Dan, you want to propose?
(laughing).
It's in the second paragraph, we're talking about, A, a copy of construction plans. Y'all want to change that to a copy of...
Are you on the second?
Preliminary construction plans and specifications?
Just change the sentence, just the preliminary.
Yeah.
Okay. Could you repeat that, please, Bill?
Yeah, in A, in the fourth line of the second paragraph, say a copy of preliminary construction plans for the proposed driveway, blah, blah, blah.
If, if the planning, I'm, I'm gonna just kind of come down a little hard here. If the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to approve this exception, this is a far larger text amendment than what's before us right now, because administration of this ordinance is under the authority of the stormwater administrator. The only other thing in this ordinance that goes outside of the administrative responsibility is matters of interpretation, and that goes to Board of Adjustment. I don't see, under administration and procedures, where planning and zoning has this authority. So I don't, and I don't think that under the exception, we could just write it into there, I think it would have to go somewhere else as well. So I'm just, I'm a little concerned about the authority granting and whether that is under here. Did Mason and Dan?
I didn't, I don't call it anything else. Well, maybe, but I didn't, I'll be the first one.
But I think we're saying we're going to leave it at administrative level.
Yeah, I think that's going your way.
Yeah, we were, we were talking about delay.
Yeah, as long as there's a way for somebody to get reviewed, and you said through the Board of Adjustment.
If there's an appeal.
That's what I mean.
Yes.
They have a right to appeal your decision.
The applicant can, or there's a list of who else could appeal it?
Yeah, I think we're to the point of leaving it at administrative level.
Yep. Are you happy to add?
That's right, I'm going through.
Understood.
I'm crossing, I'm looking at where we need to cross it out, which is a lot of places.
So that would be in the fourth, one, two, three, the fourth line. We would put in the stormwater administrator, or you want to say the stormwater administrator with...
I think we...
Sue with the approval, yeah.
So drop the second bracket, the plan.
Can we read through it?
One of the files, Bill, someone else.
It's a lot of other places.
It would say, "As requested, the applicant has set out in the stormwater permit application and shown on the site plan submitted in accordance with sections 303 and 304, or an application for amendment."
Can I add, Bill, can I add a revision to the top?
Sure.
Stormwater permit application, they're called stormwater control permits.
Stormwater control.
And the S, the C, and the P are capitalized.
Okay.
And then section 303.
Yep.
Actually, yeah, just the, "As set out in the stormwater control permit application."
Just leave it at that?
Well, I mean, I think the rest of the language is fine, just stormwater permit application is not what stormwater permits are called.
We were going to change that to stormwater permit, stormwater control permit application, and all those are going to have initial caps.
Okay.
Okay? Then it goes in, "And shown on the site plan submitted in accordance with sections 303 and 304, or an application for amendment, comma..."
I had a question about that when we were reading specifics. What's it saying, "Or an application for amendment"? What is that referring to?
No, I don't think it exists in the permit. It exists in the amendment.
Should we say that, "Or an amendment to an existing permit, or an amendment to an existing..." Can we add to an existing permit, just to clarify that?
Yeah, existing stormwater control.
Yeah.
To an existing stormwater control permit. And that's not capitalized. Close parentheses. I mean, that's comma there, and then put...
Is it in print? It is in print.
It is a print, okay.
Yeah.
To an approved, approved?
To an existing.
To an existing.
Control water.
Control, stormwater control permit, comma, "The stormwater administrator with the written approval of the town manager may grant a reduction in the surface water, blah, blah, blah." And that gets us, I'm interested in moving us along, that's what I'm trying to do. So, "May grant a reduction..." Now, y'all stop me where you want. "May grant a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement in section 305.1, for an impervious driveway or bridge to provide access to applicant's site and/or for utilities to serve applicant's site, comma, provided and only in the event the site is permitted to be used for residential purposes only, when, one, the applicant provides evidence that alternatives to constructing such a driveway or bridge and/or installing such utilities without the requested relief."
Can I suggest two changes here?
Yep.
To make that full, that's, that's very awkward.
Yep.
And I just, if we can scratch out alternatives to and delete that comma, it reads more clearly.
What you read, right?
Provides evidence that constructing such a driveway, et cetera, without the requested relief is...
And then strike the IE?
Delete the IE.
Okay.
Are impossible or not practical.
Okay, good, got it.
So read that.
Are we striking...
That would read, one little I, would say, "The applicant provides evidence that constructing such a driveway or bridge and/or installing such utilities without the requested relief, i.e. either a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement, are impossible or not practical."
So all you did is...
Is impossible.
Oh, is impossible, okay.
So all you did was deleted alternatives to, and changed R to is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so far, so good?
Yes.
And, "Two, the proposed driveway, bridge, and/or utility improvements will be located and designed to minimize impervious surface, comma, protect against erosion and sedimentation runoff, comma, have the least adverse effects on aquatic life and habitat, comma, protect water quality to the maximum extent practical, comma, and utilize all appropriate..." I would suggest here for the public, you put best management practices, per quote, BMPs?
That's one.
Okay. Okay. Got that, Cal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nothing in this section 305.A shall be construed to authorize, let me go, to authorize a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement for any improvement other than driveway, bridge, and/or utility improvements to...
Can I add something?
Yep.
For residential purposes.
Where are you, where are you putting it?
After improvements.
For any improvement?
Nothing in this subsection shall be construed to authorize a reduction in the surface water buffer or exception from the built-upon area requirement for any improvement other than driveway, bridge, and/or utility improvements for residential purposes. How you put it here?
Okay.
Well...
It said before, we don't have, we already said before.
Well, but is that, by saying, by limiting, if you're limited for residential purpose only at that point, you open up the possibility, you could do it for non- residential, or you not?
Now, as we say up top.
I understand, I think.
Right before, one little I, it says, "Provided and only if the applicant's site is permitted..."
I agree, I agree, so why edit again at the bottom? It's already covered it before we got to the one and the two.
Yeah.
Okay, done it. I was going to say, if you put that in there, could you have a grocery store truck deliver vegetables to your house? I don't think you could. That's a commercial purpose. But I think it's covered by having it at the beginning, so I would not put it in here.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, the next paragraph. "In addition to submittals required..." Well, let me just say, I think we ought to have an A, B, C, V, Z, however that works out, and fit it in like the other parts. Okay, "In addition to submittals required in section 304 and elsewhere in this ordinance, the request for a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement submitted by the applicant shall also include the following, colon, A..."
Would this be where you break down A, B, C, D?
Can't hear you.
Would this be where you break down A and A, C?
You can break that stuff there, correct?
Yes, you could do that, right. A, a copy of construction plans for the...
Preliminary.
Well, do we want to say that now, we're giving it to the, to her? See, she said she needed more.
I, I would, I would say a copy of construction plans, blah, 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 which shall include a detailed depiction of all proposed impervious surfaces and structures.
Okay. All right, got that. "A copy of construction plans for the proposed driveway, bridge, and/or utility improvements prepared by an engineer licensed in North Carolina, which plans shall include a..."
Detailed.
"...a detailed depiction," can't even read my own handwriting, "of all proposed structures." Okay?
And services and structures.
Of all impervious surfaces.
Is it all, all proposed impervious services and structures?
Okay.
That was my suggestion.
That's better. All proposed.
Impervious services.
And structures, and/or structures.
And structures.
And, okay. B, a certification by the engineer preparing the plans, that the proposed driveway, bridge, or utility structure will be located and designed to minimize impervious surface, protect against erosion and sedimentation runoff, will have the least adverse effects on aquatic life and habitat, will protect water quality to the maximum extent practicable, and will utilize all appropriate BMPs, and that's okay to use BMPs there.
Yep.
C, a copy of all permits required by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality or any other state agency or authority. D, a copy of all permits required by the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and any other federal agency or authority. And E, a proposed agreement.
I want to stop before you read this language. So this agreement, that it's saying, Mason and I talked about this, and I read this to say this is a stormwater control permit, because when they sign a stormwater control permit, they are attesting that what they have put on here is what they are going to construct. So I don't find the language of proposed agreement, I don't really know what that means, other than they have the full permit.
Can't we say an operation maintenance agreement?
So that would be our piece, was this has...
We just cross-reference the operation maintenance agreement required under section 301, that's what it's intended.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's asking for some sort of agreement, and I think it's wrong with both permit and operation maintenance.
But they won't have the permit.
Right. And so the operation maintenance agreement, section 309, already outlines the operation maintenance agreement requirement.
So would you take E out?
I would say and, and E, an operation maintenance agreement in concordance with section six, section 309.
Wait, sorry, an operation and maintenance agreement in concordance with?
Section 309.
And it's not proposed.
Is it conformity or conformance? Conformance, I think it is. With section 303, did you say?
309.
309, okay. Informant content acceptable to the stormwater administrator providing for reconstruction of the proposed driveway.
I would just take the entire E out and add and E, an operation and maintenance agreement in concordance with section 309.
Okay, okay. So that would take out informant content, you're leaving...
Hold that one, get them out.
Would you take out informant content acceptable?
I think she's saying take out the whole E, everything that's in E all the way to the second.
And just put an operation and maintenance agreement.
Yes.
All right. And then, that's all the way.
And I have a question about that, the operational support agreement. Does that detail what the owner would need to do in event of keeping that area clean and maintained?
Yes. And it's recorded among the register of deeds, so it is pertinent to the property.
Okay.
Regardless of owner.
So that will then end with E, an operation and maintenance agreement in concordance with section 309. Okay?
Now, Bill...
Could we just, could we say otherwise acceptable to the stormwater administrator?
No. I want it, no, it's an operation and maintenance agreement. Nope. I don't, there's no leeway there.
Okay.
I want to talk about this next paragraph. So section 304, section 304.2, which is part of the plans that they have to submit, is a natural resources inventory. You guys in here say, "A tree survey, a plan for restoration of topography, and plans to protect important features." The natural resources inventory is a written or graphic inventory of the natural resources at the site and surrounding area as it exists prior to the commencement of the project. This description should include a discussion of soil conditions, forest cover, geologic features, topography, wetlands, and native vegetated areas on the site, as well as the location and boundaries of other natural feature protection and conservation areas such as lakes, ponds, floodplain, stream buffer. Particular attention should be paid to environmentally sensitive features that provide particular opportunities for, or constraints for development. So under the natural resources inventory, they already have to show me all the trees.
Where does that appear in here, then?
That's, so you guys are requiring them to submit plans in accordance with section 304. Section 304 requires an NRI.
So we don't need to say this paragraph?
Um, I, I mean, I, I don't think so, but... But you have to show all the trees on it, regardless.
Okay, that, that's, Dan points out, it says, "The stormwater administrator, take out and town manager, planning and zoning, may request additional information, it's requesting."
I missed that.
She gave you the option to request it, you don't have it.
I think, I think we ought to retain the right to mandate additional information, but there may be something that pops up, and you just need to be able to ask it.
Okay, so in that...
I would just say, because it says the information may include.
Yeah, that's fine.
It could include other stuff.
I missed, I missed may. I missed the word may. The other piece of this is important natural features. That's very vague, and I think it's different for different people. I, I think that needs to be a little bit more narrow.
But again, you, it says you may request plans to protect important natural features.
I think you're okay, huh? You're gonna have to specify what feature you want. When I brought this up the other night, I went to look for this cross in this, and it's not a great big beautiful art feature, but I mean, you guys know that we've got so many beautiful walkways in our streams. There's a really nice one. I just want to make sure, that doesn't get, we may want to be in a situation where something crosses, and we want to make sure of thicker natural species, speech, industry, the public, preserve. Again, it will be...
And you don't have to request it.
But it's, but it's, but what I'm concerned about is an appeal based on important natural features, and that's a subjective term.
Why don't we just strike important?
I mean, something, something that I may think is important, someone else may not, and vice versa. And so that, that's where, for me, I, I am concerned about important natural feature without more, more definition to what that means.
Would you be happy with what Julie said, just to take out?
Let's strike important.
Strike the word important.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay. Then we go on, this authority to grant a reduction in surface water... Oh, yeah, you need to put DBH and define it.
Yeah, I think.
There, just like we did before. This may be the only time it appears.
Agreed.
Authority to grant a reduction in surface water buffer, and an exception from the built-upon area requirement shall be construed to be permissive... area requirement shall be construed to be permissive and not mandatory.
And so, Bill, everything below this is discretionary. And so, if this is at the administrative level, everything after that first sentence should be struck.
Except for the last term.
What, except?
Yes, this, this paragraph. In this paragraph, so the authority to grant a reduction shall be construed to be permissive and not mandatory.
Strike the rest.
Strike, without limiting the generality of the preceding sentence, they may attach reasonable and appropriate conditions, any such condition should relate to, you may impose more restrictive requirements than the intent of the stormwater ordinance. So, I would strike all of that, because that is very discretionary.
And then, just leave in, in approving, a request for relief is provided herein, the stormwater administrator may impose more restrictive requirements than would otherwise be required by this ordinance and those in the application, as deemed necessary to ensure that the purposes and intent of this stormwater management ordinance are met. Okay, is that?
Are you saying to delete all?
Did you want to-
Leaving that last sentence?
Leaving that sentence in, or are you taking it out?
I thought you were saying to delete all that.
Okay, I thought you said delete all that.
Why do you want to delete all that?
I find, I think it's too discretionary. I think from an administrative standpoint, administrative decisions need to be bound by a box. You know, one, I think, one example is, and this is gonna be a total left turn, but it's the best example that I have, for special use permits that are issued by the Board of Adjustment, special use permits cannot be modified unless you go back to the Board of Adjustment. However, the state legislature does allow administrative modifications if the revision changes the gross square footage by 500 square feet, by 15%. It gives a specific measurement for the administrator to look at and say, you are meeting this. It's a yes or a no. The gray area that an administrator can operate in is very limited. So, in my opinion, from an administrative standpoint, I think that, that this part invites too much discretion, and I think it introduces a level of potential inconsistency.
So, you, just so that I understand, you think, you don't want to have the right to impose more restrictive requirements?
I mean, I don't, I, I don't know what, I mean, I, I just, I think it's too discretionary. If you guys want to leave it in there, it's fine, I mean, that's just-
I think that gives you some-
My opinion.
I think that ought to stay in, I think-
Okay, that's fine.
I think that gives you some power that you're gonna need.
So, the, you're, you're taking out without limiting, all the way down to applicant may propose, and leaving in, in approving a request for relief, dot, dot, dot.
Yes.
All the way to the end.
You'd start, you'd start with in approving and requesting.
Well, and striking the, the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And why strike town manager, that'd be the stormwater administrator.
In several places.
Yep.
Am I understanding, we're taking out the town manager also?
Yes.
Okay.
We are?
Oh, I thought we were.
No. Oh, yeah, I was leaving, leaving the town manager, yeah. Just, just for, I think that gives that extra level of, of, of check.
All right, but I'm, I'm confused, are we, are we only taking out Planning and Zoning Commission, or y'all eliminating one paragraph, sentence, or more?
No, we're taking out this whole thing here, without limiting.
Without limiting in the third line.
Why, why are you taking that out? Why not leave in that discretion, she doesn't have to exercise it?
That's staying in.
I'm saying why take out any of, I'm suggesting the only thing we delete in that whole paragraph is Planning and Zoning Commission in three places.
If you guys want to leave it in, you can.
That's fine.
I'm-
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, it's, it's all permissive.
Yep, without limiting, this gives you the ability to-
Gives her ability to ask, she may never ask for it, but who knows, the day may come, Kellie, when you're glad to have that authority.
Y'all okay with that?
I understand, you probably won't ever use it.
Okay, so we're leaving that in, and just taking out everywhere it references the Planning and Zoning Commission, okay. The last-
I mean, that's my proposal, what I don't know what-
I'm fine with that.
I've heard everybody say that. Okay with you, Mason? Like the last paragraph, before requesting relief is provided for in this subsection, blah, 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 the applicant is encouraged to meet with the stormwater administrator to discuss the nature of the proposed relief. Alternatives to proposed relief that may have a reduced impact on stormwater management require submittals that must accompany any request for relief and other potential concerns related to the-
I would move that up. I would move that up, higher up in here, potentially after, if you go back to the first page, at the end of the first paragraph, I would move that higher up. I think that's very important, before they start-
Second paragraph?
Yeah, so on the front, I would take that last paragraph and maybe put it between paragraphs one and two. I don't know if that interrupts the flow, but I do feel like that's very important.
Yeah, I do think it interrupts the flow, but I think that sort of summarizes it all.
Yeah.
So, I think it fits at the end.
I'm really fine, I'm not-
Why do we use the word encouraged? Is there a way that you can say it's required that they meet with the stormwater administrator?
I think, I think you can.
Shall mean, advocate shall mean.
Very much should, please.
Shall means you will.
I, I, just asking.
I think that's fine, I mean, I don't see any issue with that.
Okay.
There is, there are other, there are other parts of the zoning ordinance that they have to meet with me for, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility to say required to meet.
Change is encouraged to.
But you feel like that needs to be up?
Okay, we're stance changing is encouraged to, to shall, or leaving it at the end, because it is a good summary.
Well, um, if you're, if you're gonna require it, I would maybe put it submitted by the applicant, I, I would, I would put it higher up, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna require it, because it's almost like, here's the summary, here's the reasons why in the first paragraph. As it's written now, second paragraph talks about what you have to have included in your submission, you know, and then we kind of go down from there to the discretionary pieces. If you're gonna require them upfront to meet with the stormwater administrator, I would put that higher up.
Okay, let's put that as a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Going back to your original format, which I'm, you know, very cognizant of, and whenever we review these things, and not, having an A and not a B or a C, but all of this, I think, needs to be in one body, if you had an A, then it looks like A's.
Then the A, one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, what I would suggest is let, but, instead of having an A, just put a caption underneath general standard one, exception, and then have a one, two, three, four, five under it, and each of these paragraphs will be numbered. I mean, just, just suggestion for formatting.
Yeah, let me make sure I understand that. So, right now, the page reads, there's a bold 305 general standards, there's a little, until such time, blah, blah, blah. Then there's number one, and that's where the built-upon buffer is required. So, you're saying-
Underneath that one.
Have just exception.
Having a caption underlying, bold caption, how you want the exception, colon.
Caption, exception, and then-
Exception, colon, yeah, and then have a, and then have a A, B, C, D, E, for each paragraph we've got here.
Can, would, why don't, wouldn't you say 305's general standards one, and then put two exceptions? That doesn't work.
Well, I think-
We just put two, alright.
We don't have all three or five in front of us, and that's what Kellie's saying to somebody.
305 is numbered, so it goes 305, one, two, three, four, five, and then under five, they have A, B, C, D, whatever.
But this is, this is one, so we, this is all-
This is all under one.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, it would be an exception to that requirement.
Exception, A, B, C, D.
Yes, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, are we, you happy with this?
Can I read back through it?
Please do.
I will, and I'll, I read, I read quick.
Sure.
Make a motion first, to have some on the floor.
Okay, would someone like to move adoption of this as?
Bill, the one thing I would say before you guys actually-
Not called vote?
No, I know, but I think you should allow for public comment on this. Okay.
Okay, yes, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to consider recommending the third text amendment as amended by all of this discussion for consideration of this.
Is there a second, and the cable's gonna read it after that?
I'll second.
Okay, now, madam?
All right, so we're gonna add under 305-1, exception in bold, and then the format is going to be A, B, C, D, so on and so forth. At the request of the applicant, this is A, A, at the request of the applicant, open prons as set out in the Stormwater Control Permit, capitalized, application, and shown on the site plan submitted in accordance with Sections 303 and 304, or an application for an amendment to an existing stormwater control permit, the stormwater administrator with the written approval of the town manager may grant a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement in Section 305-1 for an impervious driveway or bridge to provide access to applicant's site and/or for utilities to serve applicant's site, provided and only, comma, sorry, provided and only in the event the site is permitted to be used for residential purposes only, comma, when, colon, one, the applicant provides evidence that constructing such a driveway or bridge and/or installing such utilities without the requested relief, i.e. either a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement, is impossible or not practicable, semicolon. And two, the proposed driveway, bridge, and/or utility improvements will be located and designed to minimize impervious surface, protect against erosion and sedimentation runoff, have the least adverse effects on aquatic life and habitat, protect water quality to the maximum extent possible, excuse me, practicable, and utilize all appropriate best management practices, and then in parentheses BMPs. Nothing in this subsection 305-1A shall be construed to authorize a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement for any improvement other than driveway, bridge, and/or utility improvements as provided herein. And B, before requesting relief as provided for in this subsection 305-1A, the applicant is, the applicant shall meet with the stormwater administrator to discuss the nature of the proposed relief, alternatives to the proposed relief that may have a reduced impact on stormwater management, the required submittals that must accompany any request for relief, and other potential concerns related to the relief being proposed. C, in addition to submittals required in Section 304 and elsewhere in this ordinance, the request for a reduction in the surface water buffer or an exception from the built-upon area requirement submitted by the applicant shall also include the following. Did you guys want to do sub-paragraphs for these? Okay.
That would be a little I's, double I's, a little triple I's, that A, B, C.
Yep, so, uh, one, or I, whatever, a copy of construction plans for the proposed driveway, bridge, and/or utility improvements prepared by an engineer licensed in North Carolina, which plans shall include a detailed depiction of all proposed impervious surfaces and structures. Two, a certification by the engineer preparing the plans that the proposed driveway, bridge, or utility structure will be located and designed to minimize impervious surface, protect against erosion and sedimentation runoff, will have the least adverse effects on aquatic life and habitat, will protect water quality to the maximum extent practicable, and will utilize all appropriate BMPs. Three, a copy of all permits required by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality or any state agency or authority. Four, a copy of all permits required by the United States Army Corps of Engineers and any other federal agency or authority, and an operation and maintenance agreement in conformance?
Conformance, that's right.
Conformance with Section 309.
And you're gonna have a five, or E is?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, five, you're right.
Kayla, after, after Roman at four, it's a comma, and it should be a semicolon, any other federal agency or authority, semicolon.
So, the, uh, four, a copy of all permits required by the United States Army Corps of Engineers, comma, and any other federal agency or authority, comma, and semicolon.
I don't know if you need a comma there and a semicolon, just a semicolon.
Just a semicolon, okay. All right, um, A, B, C, D. D, the stormwater administrator and town manager may request additional information as they deem necessary. This information may include, one, a tree survey locating all trees in the proposed construction area, and immediate vicinity exceeding 12 inches in diameter breast height, A, two, A, sorry, semicolon, two, a plan for restoration and topography and vegetation of all areas disturbed by construction, semicolon, and, three, plans to protect natural features, and then in parentheses, such as a rock formation.
And that one, two, three is I, double I's, triple I's.
Yes, you're right. Thank you. All right, the authority to grant a reduction in the surface water buffer and an exception from the built-upon area requirement shall be construed to be permissive and not mandatory, without limiting the generality of the preceding sentence, the stormwater administrator and town manager may attach reasonable and appropriate conditions to approval of the requested relief. Any such condition should relate to the relationship of the proposed improvements and stormwater, the surface water and surrounding lands being impacted, in parentheses, including natural features thereof, comma, open space and vegetation being impacted, comma, surrounding properties, comma, and other matters that the stormwater administrator and town manager may find appropriate or the applicant may propose. In approving a request for relief as provided herein, the stormwater administrator and town manager may impose more restrictive requirements than would otherwise be required by this ordinance and those in the application, as deemed necessary to ensure that the purposes and intent of this stormwater management ordinance are met. Done, yes.
So, I know, does anybody in the public want to speak about, or have a suggestion before we vote on this, because Alan needs to get out here to meeting, does anybody like to say anything specifically about what we've done?
Seeing you all are stormwater companies that said they wrote, my concern in coming to this meeting was to see that you all are considering the water implications of what could come up for one year, since you've got to change law here. And between the work that Phil, Premier, and now for the town council meeting, and the comments that he raised here, I'm satisfied that we've done that, and I'm really pleased to have the depth of discussion I could have had today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you double our salary?
Once again, I reiterate, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not compensated.
But, but, thank you, Jean.
Yes, thank you, Jean, Mary.
We understand your feelings, but, okay, thank you for the discussion, just from listening to this meeting, I'm very glad that we have two senators here, that's interesting. Thank you very much, for giving the benefit of the word, and, so, I just have to talk to the board, our sort of the Planning and Zoning, oh, fifteen years ago, or the other member said to me, Mary, why don't we need to have a planning and zoning, why don't we need to have the ordinance? This answer was, why do we need to have planning and ordinance and zoning regulations? Here in Montreux, we're all such good people, why don't we need ordinance? Here, we're all such good people, and this answer, that I complain with it, we're all good people, but we're all just a few good souls. So, thank you for your work, and, um, I think the other thing that sort of, first thing we talk, is that, particularly, what's the specific, is what the next step will be for those wants, on the bottom, we've already planned it, the president's also has to work with it, and you have that whole, that's, in the legal process, and I don't think anybody else, until Mason's, but it's worked.
Thank you, Mary, I thought you were gonna say that you appreciated that we were here because we were all Presbyterians who like to argue. Well, Daniel's an Episcopalian, that's right. Okay, anything else that needs to come before us? Any other public comment? The next meeting is April 25th at 10:30, and I want to thank y'all, y'all have done a great job.
Did you guys-
Mason, thank you, and Dan.
Did you guys do a motion to adopt?
No, we didn't.
Oh, yeah. You need a new chairman, would anybody like to be chairman? Yeah, we have-
You're just wanting one at your record.
I'm, I'm gonna take your candy away.
We got it on the floor, and then she went ahead, and we haven't voted.
I, I would like to make a motion that we adopt-
It's already, it's already-
Oh, we've already got it, okay, sorry.
Okay, y'all ready to vote?
Yeah, let's go.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank y'all for all your hard work.
Thank you guys so much.
And now, we'll go into the council, and y'all won't even have to discuss a thing.
Yeah, just, just for any, anybody listening, this will be, uh, this will- Yeah, just, just for any, anybody listening, this will be, uh, this will be on the Board of Commissioners' agenda for consideration at their, I'm pulling it up right now, yes, 9 o'clock. Um, will be on the Board of Commissioners' agenda on, oh my gosh, I can't find it. Uh, March 14th at 7 o'clock, public comment, public forum is at 6:30. Um.
That's all happened.
Yeah. That's a tough one.
Okay.
But he wants to build.
Oh, did I not close it? Oh, yeah, I said we adjourned. Yep. We're done. Thank y'all again. Good work. Thank you.
Yeah.
I dropped that over y'all at 8 o'clock last night, or whenever it was.
Mr. Tucker?
I figure it's better than 7 this morning.
No, I mean, it was, it was.
I'm gonna take your house.
I hope it was, I wish we.
Yeah.
Basically, basically, it comes to me, well, I didn't see it, it was about 5 o'clock.
I didn't think that we would ever get through it before we started, but y'all worked it pretty well.
I think we worked it well.